Right, so I'm just gonna go through, I think what I'm gonna do, instead of just like, give my comments and write them on paper, I think it's better if I make a recording. I will go in front of camera, but at this point it's at night time and I kinda like wanna concentrate on what was said in this meeting about the dolmen, because I think that's more important. Because the council were talking about end games, they're talking about, you know, what's the end game for this, and they're talking about tourism, they're talking about, you know, the dolmen is meant to be special and magical and visual access and all these other things, which I think is relevant, you know, and I'm entitled to make an opinion on it. So, this is my copy of the video which I've got, because it's important actually for reference compared to a lot of things that councils have been doing over here, so we'll go through it now, because it's 17 minutes, it's not too long, so...
The same report as was produced last month, as was highlighted by councillor Lewis, and really what I want to say in relation to this issue is quite complex, but we're working on a number of solutions that we believe that we will be able to deliver very, very shortly. It's a very sensitive situation.
Right, so, she's just come out with, they're talking about the dolmen, they're talking about actually getting access, this meeting, we'll get this into context now, so this meeting is supposedly presented to us as meant to be about, the dolmen's on private land, and it was private, right, so that, you know, as long as the person who owned it is, likes the dolmen and wants to preserve it, then everything's good, except public can't get on there. So this meeting's about it actually becoming not private anymore, and people can actually get access, if I'm correct on that or not? It's about actually making it so people can go there, right? Whether it's tourists or locals actually get access to it, like megalithic site enthusiasts, people like that. But now, she's just come out with the words, "it's a very sensitive situation" and things like that. Now, at this point, I don't know what meetings councillors and strategic developers, I don't know what relationships they have with people who own land, who are thinking about planning, talking about planning, so, at this stage, I'm interested to know, do we know, do we know if anyone in that room, at this stage, knew about or knows about those plans for that apartment block? Because it takes a long time to draw up plans like that, you don't just chuck them together. So, you know, it's a very sensitive situation, it might be a very sensitive situation with the landowner and the dolmen, but wow, it's gonna be even more a sensitive situation when somebody drops some massive apartment block next to it! Gonna be sensitive! Gonna be sensitive then! So, you know, I'm gonna be carefully reading what language they're using and see if I can pick up on, you know, if they actually know about all this and the end game and the language that they're using, and if they might be making references to this impending development that's just been dropped on it? Because I'll tell you what, you know, some planning goes into that, anyway, so, you know, we'll see, we'll see.
...property, and we are working very difficult, very, very closely with the landowner, and we're all...
She went to say "very difficult" then. She went to say "very difficult", what's difficult? Very carefully with the landowner. It can't be that difficult if it seems like they're gonna, if they're making progress with it, because they've already started planning their new walkway for it! They've been putting up plans of the new walkway and the new path! And I actually think that, you know, even though it's in the interest to have a path that's hard-wearing and a path that, you know, protects the flooring away, it's like at Stonehenge, at Stonehenge, right, this is important to say, at Stonehenge now, they're all complaining about the road being near it, even near it, and they're wanting to move the road either under a tunnel or away, right? Yet, there are loads of concrete paths or whatever all over the, around the Stonehenge! Now, or not concrete, but I think they're similar paths to what the, similar type of materials that they wanted to put near Glendrewid, and it's the old, original path, anyway! It's meant to be the old, 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 original path. Now, what's the point of restoring trees and forests all around Stonehenge and taking the road away from it? So you're going back in time, when it's called these modern paths! You're not fully, completely transporting yourself back in time, are you? You're sort of, you're saying you wanna get rid of the road and put trees and forests around it, but when you go there, it's hardly like you've got a time machine and gone back when there's all these modern materials for paths. Now, this is what I think, right, and this is really important, right? When the Celtic people, right, don't matter whether they're Irish or British or whatever, whether it's Ireland or England mainland, right, you know, go back in time, Boudica, Budisia, right? They had, they've got all these ancient trackways, right, the sweet track and all these other tracks, right? Now, before Roman roads were made, the Celts were making tracks, because they're studying it in Ireland! I've seen a full programme about studying ancient tracks that they found preserved in Ireland, so they know how those were made and they know what they were made of, right? Now, back then, people weren't pansies, they weren't soft, you know, they were hands-on with things, you know, they were wrestling wolves, using spears, defending themselves, add Stone Age tools and weapons and later, you know, Iron and Bronze Age tools and weapons, right? Now, those houses that they made, it wasn't the Cub Scouts going into the forest and making a bivouac and just blowing it, you know, and making a little bivouac out of sticks, be careful, don't knock it over, right? They made, look at Newgrange, Knowth and Douth, they are absolutely made to last in time, right? And so were the ring forts, right, and so were the, look at that dolmen! I ain't gonna go over to it, right, and so be careful, don't damage it, right? It's made out of tonnes and tonnes of stone, right? They weren't messing around when they put that there, right? It don't just take, you know, a couple of kids walking up and down the path to ruin the dolmen, even though you don't really want it chipped or anything like that, it is made sturdy. Now, those paths that they used to make, right, in that time, those people who made the paths, made the paths to last and the trackways. The ancient tracks and pathways were made to last and they were riding chariots, two-wheel chariots over them, horses, right? An horse isn't light, it weighs a bit, right? And even chariots, even if there's an horse pulling a chariot with wheels on, it's not just a mum and dad walking down the road with an fricking ice cream, is it? It's not a mum and dad walking down the road with an ice cream, "oh look, we're going to see the dolmen!", "oh actually, we don't need to go for a walk to see it, because I can see it out the window, it's a bit small", "yeah, I know, look at us in this massive tower block", haven't we come on in life, you know, we might as well, "what, we're going there to see the tower block or the dolmen?". If you're gonna wanna be transported back in time, which is the whole point, although, you know, the dolmen's actually probably gonna be covered with something, not just skeletal, back in time, but, you know, maybe even to the time they were actually constructing it or building it and they just got to that stage, maybe that far back in time, right? They're not gonna have, you know, it's like, this is the thing, right? You've got, you know, chief executive of the highways department, building and planning, Balfour Beatty Care, blah, 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 you know, digger, construction team, working, where's your hard hat, on-site access, all this, right? That ain't going back in a time machine to somewhere magical! That's going to, you know, you might as well just land stash your enterprise there, you know, "all right, number one captain Kirk, here's Patrick Stewart", what are you doing, right? You've got an ancient site, right, that you were meant to be transported back in time to appreciate, right? If you are engaging a brain, right, with the materials of, you know, what have we got? Well, what have they got at B&amp;Q? You know, what have they got at, you know, Juson's? What have they got at, you know, Flamingoland? It's maybe 2000 B.C. or whenever it is, 6000 B.C.! What is the, why use gravel and that? "Oh, we've just gotta be sturdy and last", it's an insult! You've got a four, six thousand year old dolmen or whatever, right? Yeah? You're going there to admire how sturdy it is and how much it has lasted through history and time, still standing there, wasn't a small feat, right? And then, you care to insult the craftsmanship, intelligence and construction abilities of the ancient ancestors in even making ancient tracks and pathways, because apparently using ancient materials methods to make tracks is rubbish, you know? Well, it can't be that rubbish, the stuff they made, because there's a massive dolmen stood there, still erect, it's been there for god knows how many thousands of years, do you know what I mean? It's just the mentality of, you know, "oh, it's superficial, innit, ooh, an old dolmen in some woods, ooh, isn't that, you know, something to go and see", oh, right? And then like, I'll just switch that part of my brain off now, and then I'll switch on the other part of my brain at the other side, that goes, "ah, yes, I knew some hard hats had to come into it, yes, let's get the hard hats, let's get the, you know, the yellow jacket, and let's get some power tools out", you know? I mean, you've just start, you start a subject, a topic, you start an entire narrative about something in context, and then you almost completely ruin it by, you know, kinda diving in with the, you just can't keep these chief executive highways developers out of there! They've always got, "get something into there, or get a bit of aluminium into there and some hardcore, and a little bit of, "oh, we've got a new material here now", no, 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 no! What are you thinking? We need the archaeologists, the experimental reconstructive department of archaeology, which they have, right? We need to make, if you're gonna be making a track or pathway, right, to go back in time, particularly into woodland and nature, right? To see an old construction, the last thing you wanna see is a new construction, people over the top of the trees overlooking it and people having ice creams dripping down, waving over, you're not going back in time, right? And the other last thing you want is any, anyone in the remotest connection with a shirt, a tie, right, and an hard hat and a Juson's power tool, right? To be wanting to even have any slightest remote idea or input into the thing whatsoever, because it's bound for disaster, right? So, seriously, if you insult the ingenuity, the materials and the hard-wearingness of those people, "oh, it's not gonna last long enough", well, how long do you think it lasted when they made an ancient trackway? Two weeks? A month? Three years? I think it lasted longer than that! Or else the dolmen wouldn't last long! It needs to, if you're gonna have a track or a path to that dolmen to see it, it needs to be made out of the actual processes, materials and construction methods that they made the ancient trackways out, which you've got evidence for all around Ireland in the archaeology of us, what's the point? What's the point paying these archaeologists to find out and investigate? What are you gonna do with that information and knowledge, we're a waste of money, or because we know it now, "well, you know it, well, we've got an ancient site here", you know, "we want an ancient pathway to it", now, even if it takes a bit of maintenance every five years or every 10 years, right? Don't tell me that you can't at least use, whatever they did, we can now surely do better, but, no, I don't mean better by changing the materials, because you ruin the style and context of it! Make it so it's authentic, make it so it's original materials style, right? But just, you know, do as good a job as they did, or a little bit better, of that materials and style, and then you're going on a proper journey then, you know, and then you can go into the woodlands. And the thing is, you know, there's a real need at the moment for, we've got issues in the world with food, diet, advertising, all this, a lot of modern food is very unhealthy, people are overeating. My friends, my mates, my dad's friend in Ireland, James, right, at Ballylanders, he walks round his house to keep fit! In a circle, keeping fit, he walks round and round and round it! He walks round and round the house! He runs around it all day to keep fit, don't go down a country lane and come back for a five mile, 10 mile walk, he walks around the house! Now, if he can walk round his house, right, on a daily basis, in circles, and he ain't walking and hauling the floor or walking himself into a trench and ruining the ground, then surely you can have a couple of visitors or whatever walking up and down to visit a dolmen without wearing the floor through, surely! I mean, you know, and to be honest, if you allow a block of flats that close to it, they're not gonna be getting an exercise walking to it, are they? What exercise is that encouraging him to get? They're not even gonna leave the block of flats! You know, you all go and walk to it, but, you know, you don't want any block of flats within at least a mile to three miles of it, really? Maybe two miles, then? You don't want any buildings two miles, you wanna encourage walking as well, you know, and you don't really want any cafes there with modern junk food. You want to be having, if you've just watched The Peaky Blinders, the last series, at the end, Tommy Shelby, they're at the gypsy camp with food, you want something like that! Not a gypsy camp, but you wanna set the atmosphere at least and have some, you know, you all be trying to encourage people to be eating very healthy, grown foods, I mean, all that woodland needs to, really needs to be, you could be inoculating it with wild mushrooms, like they're doing in the Forest of Dean, they've got wild mushrooms, you could be introducing a foraging project. Now, people go to the Forest of Dean on foraging holidays, right? Do they stay in a massive tower block that's god knows how many metres high, that's 60 metres high and square? No! I mean, they've got wood log cabin cottages and things like that, you know, you wanna be doing that, and even the people who live in the area, you know, you all be encouraging them to go. I mean, you could be even creating food source for the entire area! You wanna be investing in inoculating wood and logs in forests, growing all varieties of amazing mushrooms that usually are rarer to find, like belitis and, you know, all the different mushrooms, they're a large variety. Nettles are very, very good for you, the calcium is amazing, you could fill your teeth back in eating that, right, and you would end up like, you're the walking around, hunched back over. It's not in the shops and supermarkets either currently, because apparently it stops testosterone converting to DHT, so it stops your air falling out and it actually creates an abundance of testosterone, that's maybe why they don't allow it in the supermarkets. That's why people aren't healthy! That's why they're not being strong in their own age! You know, you wanna create an island full of strong and healthy people, you know, maybe they can have to control the sex drive, but, you know, these people lifted their stones upon there, for god's sake, you know? What are these people gonna end up like? Slubs? You want the country to be strong and healthy, you know? I don't understand this whole, I go onto the website, you know, and it's all, I've been onto the council website, it's all square buildings and sides of hills and all this, they've got squares in the brains! I mean, anyone who is anyone who wants to go to Weyland, I can guarantee you, who wants to go to Dublin, goes there because they think that it's the hobbit land! You know, they don't go there for square houses and square buildings to play Tetris, even if it's a modern edge on the old environment, and if they don't like that style, we're not saying keep them in the, you know, we're not saying try and keep them in the Stone Age, we're not trying to say keep them retarded and devolved, but, come on, within two miles of a massive, important dolmen, surely you can spare a two mile radius from a dolmen to keep the, you know, modern buildings away and stupid skyscrapers? Now, if there's gonna be this visual access, visual access for the people who are visiting it and visual access of a convincing ancient environment, without it being encroached on by, you know, people gawping over the top of you when you go to see, leaning out the windows with ice cream trickling down from above, going, "oh, look at that small dolmen, and it looks so puny down there", the puny dolmen! If you start building massive buildings like that close to the dolmen, it's gonna overshadow it! Only a retard would even contemplate it! I mean, you know, "oh yeah, but we want them to be able to look at", yeah, not from up there, you don't look down on the dolmen! What's the point in it being a Glendrewid dolmen when you're looking down on it, you know? Now, I said that maybe they should have a bridge by Stonehenge, not a tunnel going underground so you could look at it, maybe that's looking down on it, you know, so, maybe that wasn't a good idea, but shouldn't be sending people down under through a tunnel, and there was never a tunnel there at Stonehenge, anyway! So having a massive hole in the ground whether you can see it or not is hardly keeping a prehistoric environment, you know? I don't think that the right people are getting involved. You don't need anyone with, where there's a title in front of the name and anything to do with construction history, you know, building, planning, plastering, plumbing, anything like that, you don't want them involved in the project. You need people who are experimental archaeologists, professors, people like this to be involved in it. There are videos where people have done recreative villages, like that one in South Wales, but why didn't it get as many visitors? It would get more visitors, but it's quite actually far out of the waiting wheels. If they'd have done something like that near Uffington Camp and White Horse, that would be really, really popular and successful, I can tell you that. But now there's been a project planning, somebody's bought a campsite near Uffington White Horse, and now they're panicking that they're gonna, a company that develops holiday homes are gonna build an holiday home there! We've already had our ancient, 40 metre high ancient mound built on by an housing estate around 1960, in a letter of a D, a dunce, D for dunce, on a liberty cap shaped mound, and it's in line with Alex Hogs' map of the West Riding the Yorkshire, exactly where the D shape was over it! If that ain't an insult, I don't know what is! And then Imperial Chemical Factory down the road, it's almost like the Imperials wanted to rubbish it on purpose! Who's behind, who's behind this, who is behind this apartment block building? I want to know, I wanna know who their affiliations are, what party they're affiliated with, are they affiliated with the English government or anybody in the Conservative Party or the Royals? We need to know who they're affiliated with, and if they're not, if they're Irish through and through, then there's something wrong, I think there's something wrong with them! Why would you want to build that next to the Glendrewid dolmen? It's almost like subconsciously they want to do it or just make money out of it! You have people living near it and going to it, but not so close! Not with something like that! You don't wanna be looking down on something that is meant to be big and majestic and powerful, you wanna go on a trail to it, it's almost like an adventure to find it! It's no adventure or, it spoils the surprise in getting there! The good thing about going to Bellasnap is this, right? When you go to Bellasnap, it's a right walk up that hill, and then you go along a ridge, and then you go through some trees actually and through the woods, and that is actually very, very, very exciting. And then when you finally get there, you come into this clearing, it's almost like a glen, but it's open at the other one side, and there it is, and that is the surprise and the magic of going to Bellasnap. I have approached Bellasnap and been to it from the other side of the approach, which is, you go on this country lane and it's a bit of a weird walk through this kind of like, a long valley walk and then across this field, and you can see it as you're approaching from further away, you can see the shape of it as you're coming to it, as you get closer and closer, you can see it the whole way. And I think that actually, for me, that is not the best way to go to Bellasnap. The best way to go to Bellasnap is from the lower side and have to have to walk up to it, and then when you walk along and then go through that woods, then that is very, very magical. And there's no pathway there on the floor, there's no aluminium walkway inserted into the floor with shale granite, 16 by 1800 consistency material, you know, new latest whatever Juson's technical materials or whatever, it's just normal field and walkway! Now, if you're telling me not that many people go to see Bellasnap, loads of people go to see Bellasnap! In fact, I've seen an Australian woman who said aloud to me, was jogging past there! She goes jogging past there all the time on a regular basis, it's not worn through on the floor! How did god even make the floor for anything to walk on in the first place? I don't know, I think some people think it's made out of paper mache or something. We've got guys in Ireland running around the house in circles all day, and then the next thing, "ooh, might ruin the floor walking to Glendrewid dolmen", you know? You know, it's not like people have got hobbit feet or something, heavy hobbit feet, I mean, you know, you're not gonna get that dirty, even if it's raining or whatever. But if you want it, if you're worried about it being muddy and wet when it's raining, then, you know, it wants to be, it wants to be the authentic, genuine thing! You know, what did they make the sweet track out of? The one in Devon, you know? There is been a whole project, there's an entire project in archaeology on ancient trackways in Ireland, because I've seen it, I don't know if it's down Waterford Way or down Monaghan, it might be Monaghan or somewhere like that, but they've got it, you likely know which one I mean, or you can find out which one I'm referring to, right? That's what it needs. A, you don't wanna be able to see a massive block of flats are building when you're anywhere near that dolmen, because it ruins it! And you don't want them to be looking down on it, because it makes it look puny! When you get to it, you wanna go, "wow", you don't want anything in your visual field remotely near there to ruin that experience, right? And, you know, there are plenty of other ways you can make money, I can guarantee you, that is, the people who wanna build that just wanna make a profit out of it. It's got no reason or interest to be there, other than the profit of the person who wants to build it, right? Because they can, if they want to provide housing for that amount of people, they can do it outside of a two mile radius. There should be a two mile ban on building around that dolmen now, right? And, you know, what's the problem? Ireland's not short of land, you know, so what if it's, you know, we're into, for god's sake, if you wanna paint the town on McDonald's and KFC, do it, but do it outside two miles! For god's sake! It doesn't wanna be made to look puny, even if you think we've advanced since then, we've advanced since then, well, why are you going to see it then? If you've advanced since then, you should be sat in the middle of Dublin drinking pints of Guinness, or go to the Guinness factory, then you can see how we've progressed, then you can see how we've evolved, you can go to the Guinness factory, you know? I think that the building and planners have been sat in the Guinness factory probably all day, or been in Dublin drinking pints when they come up with that idea with that building block, that's the problem. We need people who care about everyone's health, who are seriously concerned about people's health, people who are seriously concerned about archaeology and heritage, right? Not people who are concerned about Tetris blocks and, you know, building and stuff like that, because it's not right! Why would you even contemplate, I wouldn't even think about it, it's a bad idea! It's a really bad idea! I know it's quite close to Dublin, but that's the thing, if it's actually quite close to Dublin, then they can drive out of the city to it, you know? And if you want to have, they're wanting to put, they bought a campsite near the Uffington White Horse and Whelan Smithy, and Uffington Camp and Dragon Hill, they're wanting to probably be looking at converting that into a holiday villa or something, it's still too close! If you're gonna, why? If you wanted, I know there needs to be housing for people who live there, on the subject of housing for people who actually are from there, right? We're not kicking them off, we're kicking them away, that dolmen was there before them and first, and it's a World Heritage Site, right? So primarily, right, we're not stopping them have fancy houses or whatever, just do it within, outside two miles! It's not that far to walk there, or go on a bike! How about Ryan Monahan? Not Ryan Monahan, Ronan Monahan's riding around on a bike on island roads, country roads, he's happy on his bike, rides around. In fact, you know, I can't see why anyone in Ireland who was proud of Ireland would want to build a block of flats within two miles of it, it doesn't make any sense to me! And look down on it, you wanna be going there and seeing, getting as much perspective of, and that's what we're talking about in this meeting, that is more insulting than anything, that's the most insulting thing, in this meeting, they're actually talking about, you know, you see how amazing it is and how big it is, you know, building anything larger than it within a certain distance... You know, building anything larger than it within a certain distance is going to take away from that. And you, you're going to be aware of it on the way there, gets into your consciousness, I won't, I won't want to do that, you know? It's not right. We're not saying, um, you know, build, um, you know, replica a lot of the rings houses or log cabins or anything. But I think really you should, they should. If, if you go to Ireland into Dublin and then you're going out of Dublin, say, oh, where can we go for the day? If there are any buildings near that Glendrew dolmen, you want those buildings to project into your mind the sense of place and the sense of time when it was. Like that professor's saying in the video for that, um, place in South Wales, that they've got the, um, roundhouses and things. You want those kind of nearing around it. In fact, if I, even if I were going to put roundhouses near it, I wouldn't want to put them any closer than where that block of flats is planned. Where that block of flats has been planned, right, that building development. You don't really want, even if you had roundhouses that are just roundhouse site, uh, roundhouse size, you know, and you can't see them obviously because of the trees. That's the closest that you'd want to be putting roundhouses near there. You won't want to put them too close to the dolmen because it's meant to be the spiritual place that you go to out of the village, you know? Um, never mind a block of freaking flats. It's just ridiculous. In fact, looking back at this council meeting now, I'm concerned that anyone in that meeting knew about this and was thinking about it. And then she, this lady here, she said, oh, well, you know, we don't really know much about it. You know, much about it enough to know that this is a sacred ancient site that people are going to be going to. And they don't want, they're on the way there, they, never mind the visual access, they don't want the visual image in the mind to, to be spoiled and ruined, you know? You, you just, if, if any councillor who goes through seventeen minutes of that meeting, right? And, and all these pledges and concerns for all these, visual access for what? I hope they didn't mean visual access for that planned block of flats that's just popped up. And I hope they didn't know about it before because that is seriously concerning. If they went about visual access to go and see it, um, on the way to it, to be honest, I will say that, right? I benefited more from Bellasnap, right? From when I walked up the field and along the ridge through the forest and then you just come to this clearing in the woods. And wow, that is absolutely amazing. It's a surprise. It is enchanting and it is very exciting. Now, the other way to Bellasnap is interesting to see it because you can see how big it is from far away. And then when you're walking towards it, getting closer and closer, but that ruins the surprise. And I don't really think you want visual access. I kind of think you want the opposite. With this dolmen, to me, I think that it would be better to not have, um, visual access. And certainly not from over the top of the tower block where people go up and out of it with their ice cream. And then, you know, look at little piffy goldman, uh, little piffy dolmen. Um, that's not what you want. It's not right. It's belittling it and it's meant to be symbolizing power of the past. Um, you know, if you want to go and celebrate how much we've moved on from there, then why go visit it? You might as well go into Dublin or you might as well, you know, just go on a train or go on a plane, you know? Um, then you can appreciate how far, you know, you, you've advanced since then. It, it's not right. It's not the right type of thinking, you know? In fact, I think that if this dolmen is really the biggest in Ireland and if it is really so magical, then you ought to be reinstating forests. And not only do you want a special walk to that dolmen, it, it, it sort of wants to be like Sherwood Forest when you go see that original oak. But the only thing about that original oak now in Sherwood Forest is that they, um, they've got all these like crutches on it, holding it up, metal things because apparently it's too big. And if it's not held up, then it'll break and fall over, which kind of makes, makes it look a bit disabled in a way, have a bit of a disability. But the dolmen won't do that because the dolmen is not a tree. The dolmen is actually made out of stone. So, you know, um, when you go into Sherwood Forest and there's that old oak tree there, it's quite cool. But the only thing is it's a little bit open and all the walkways that people have gone on have kind of widened off a bit and they have trampled into the floor. But they haven't got those special, that Sherwood Forest Visitor Centre gets a hell of a lot of visitors in number frequency. And they haven't got, um, special aluminium boarded sunken pathways with granite P sixty five, A fix three six four materials of advanced technology. You know, whatever, construction sunken at three inch point seventeen metres at an angle of fifty nine. I mean, just, you know, get a life, get a life, you know? Take your ARDA off, put your drill down. Please, Chief Executive of DLR Council, please go home, you know? Take your tie off, go home, get your kind of Budweiser out or your kind of Guinness, crack it open, you know, and watch Bob the Builder. Or watch, you know, whatever it is that you watch. Don't get involved in the dolmen project. Please do not get involved in the dolmen project. I mean, it, the, the, what mud is there on the way to see Bellasnap? Right, compulsory field trip of DLR Council, compulsory field trip of DLR Council to Bellasnap Longbarrow for a start. And then they probably won't want to because they'll say, oh, we've got our own Cairns and Sites along Barrows. Okay, have you even been, have I looked at the Cairn Valley Cairn the other day? Looked at, um, Carrick Hill, looked at Carrick Hill, you know? Um, and the others. It's actually got these people driving up there. Oh, no, no, you need to put a special surface down on the floor because the jeep's driving up the track halfway. Oh, really? Unbelievable, you know, pity God that, you know, that, that the floor will hold the jeep, you know, driving up and down. You know, you, you want, if you've read the books of Steve Jackson and Ian Livingstone, fighting fantasy like Scorpion Swamp, that is the ultimate book of glens, the Forest of Doom book, right? And the Scorpion Swamp. In fact, you know, DLR Council should be required, it should be a compulsory requirement actually for them to obtain and actually read because it's not that much of a long book. In fact, it's a game book, but it doesn't take that long to play. I think that DLR Council, as part of the research for this project, should have to have a compulsory requirement to read two books. Um, properly, I was supposed to, the Forest of Doom book and the, um, Scorpion Swamp book of Steve Jackson and Ian Livingstone, right? Because then you'll get a sense of really what you should be looking at i- in the entire setting, setting of that place. And then they, they, they should really go to the Forest of Dean, but they've probably got places like that in Ireland you can go to. I, I think you really want, right? You, you want some, it doesn't really want to be like Sherwood because it's, Sherwood Forest has got trampled back. Maybe, right, in summer when it's growing really strong in summer with the leaves and that, it don't look as um, bad, but I think the paths are a bit too wide, the forest's a bit too open, you know? But that's because people walk in it, you know? I think you, you sort of want, um, you want, the, the path to that dolmen wants to be not too wide. And it wants to, I, I think it, it just needs to be normal and natural. I can't say you can walk your way through the floor. What's it made out of chalk? What's the floor made out of there? Polystyrene, bloody hell, I mean, if it's the mud, fair enough, but come on. I mean, at the end of the day, right? If, 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 if that path to that dolmen, right? If you train the trees to go over the top, when you drive to, even when you drive to Wellow near Bath in Somerset, when you go to, um, Stony Littleton, Longbarrow, Wellow, right? When you go there, you, you, there's a single track road and it's fair enough, it's tarmac. And I, I, I found that place by chance. I didn't know about it. I was trying to find out ancient sites and they weren't popping up on the internet. I think someone was blocking us from finding out about them. We're talking over ten, fifteen, twenty, maybe that might be fifteen years ago now. Maybe, maybe, maybe nearly eighteen years ago. I drove down this road and then suddenly it's single track and the trees are just growing really thick and right over the top and intertwining. And you've got this tunnel made out of trees, right? And it's actually, I'm not joking you, it goes pitch black. It is almost completely interwoven over the top and, and it goes on for, it, it, it's darkness. And I'm like, wow, it's night time. There was not one crack of light shining through those trees in the daytime. It was almost a place created that was meant to be nighttime in the day. And I thought that was significant of actually going to Longbarrow, it made me think of that. That was just on the way there. There was, I, that experience of travelling there and going through that section of road, right? It was absolutely mind blowing and I hadn't even got to Longbarrow yet. Wow, could such a place exist on this planet, right? A, a, a track through trees which not a people of daylight came through and all growing over. It was scary, exciting, mysterious. Now, if you're walking down a path like that, right? And it opens out into a, into a, a glen, into a clearing where this dolmen is, right? Out of surprise, then it's not going to get wet, is it? How is it going to get, get muddy if not a people daylight can get through? But if it's hard enough for the rain to get through, at least in summer, maybe in winter a bit of rain might get through. Have you thought about that? Now, that would be magical walking on there, then it wouldn't get wet. Who's going to walk through the floor? One thing that makes it go funny is rain and water. Now, if it's got adequate, this is what these people were specialists in drainage. Why do they make the circles around the sites and rings and Cairns to drain the water off? Now, if you're not using the ancient intuitive education and knowledge of those peoples, why do you build a ring for or put circles around them, build a platform with a hill for on it or anything to drain the water off? You know? Um, so if those people had invented a pathway to a dolmen, you know, and we worried about it getting muddy, it wouldn't because they didn't have adequate water drainage. You don't need Juson's B and Q far before latest, you know, C five sixteen granite block chips of whatever it is, rubbish. I think they should be just, um, a very beautiful, um, grass on each side, natural, not really deep long, but, you know, um, kind of unshaven grass with a nice soil brown path. If you wanted to put a track down there, I think it must be out of the original materials that they made tracks out of. They didn't make them to play ludo on. They didn't make them to, you know, um, you know, slap my face with a white glitter trick on the floor. Oh, damage, that damaged the track. There's a, there's a kid walking on with ice cream, oh, damaged the track. Come on. These people made things, proper things, serious for, 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 um, bloody chariots to go up and down. Come on. Now, if that dolmen is in a beautiful, magical clearing, right? And then the, 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 the track to it, it, it wants to be in, I, I would grow a plant or cultivate a forest. If, if, if you're saying it was in forest unless it was just on an open plain, but it's got woodland near it, you, you might as well take advantage of that, right? I think that it should be a surprise like Bellasnap. Although you could have visual access on one side of it from further away if you wanted to, from a different approach with a different um, element of approach, you know? If you want to go up to it this way, you've never seen it before, you could do that. And then suddenly you're like, whoa, you get that surprise. Or if you have been to it before, but you want to go again and then you want to see it approaching from further away, then you could have a different approach. There could be two different ways. One could be more wide open. I really think it would be, you, you know, all this, you know, aluminium sunken, god knows what fibre, blah, 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 track rubbish. You, you want, it, it, I think you want to be really, really getting, you know, I, I think you ought to be have, you want to be walking through paths and glades and clearings. And there wants to be lots of wild mushrooms growing and things like that. And maybe even spinach and things like that. Um, you know, people could even, um, walk down the path and pick it and eat it and things like that. Or nearby, you could even have like strawberry fields with picky on strawberries. It wants to be more like that. Or even spinach and nettles and broccoli and things, you know? And then some Celtic cuts and stuff like that, just to encourage people to eat healthy. I mean, that people in Ireland do want to be healthy and eat healthy. That's why they're walking around their houses in circles trying to keep fit, you know? Um, you, how would you encourage people to do that? Is have like a trail through the woods on your way to a dolmen when you're actually getting food and stuff? And if you're getting so many visitors a day or a week, then yeah, it's gonna run, um, it's gonna, there's not going to be sufficient stock for people to have if there's going to be Americans and people coming. But I think that even if you say, you know, you can't pick them and eat them, it's going to inspire people to look at them and go, ooh, look at that. You know, that looks tasty. And then they're going to be thinking about it. And then you could have somewhere where they can go pick them nearby in the surrounding area where there are woodlands and forests where you could sustain going and picking them and eating them. Um, uh, 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 and it could be sustainable and you could keep, that you could have people going and inoculating and, and keeping, um, spars growing. And then you could have broccoli, spinach and things like that, people go pick it and eat it. And then when they go, you know, the one, maybe the ones that are near the dolmen, you can't pick them because they're there to inspire people. And then you can see them and look at it and then they want to go and then get some. And then when they go to the Celtic roundhouse nuts, which should be approximately the distance of where those flats are, then they could be, be cooking things that they've picked and grown from, not directly at the dolmen, but further away. And then you're growing a infrastructure for the locals can work there. That, that you've got jobs for the locals and then the locals can build whatever houses and style the one, if it's a massive block of flats or whatever, outside the two mile perimeter. You know, um, and it, 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 I think that there are elements, Sherwood Forest is, is kind of over, it's got too many visitors. But you can do archery there and stuff like that. It's actually, you think that, you know, when you go to the, you know, it's just another seaside game, you know? Move the, you know, put the money in the slot and shoot the rifles or whatever, you know? But then again, the Irish, you know, oh, it's the, it's the Irish lottery, you know? Tick, 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 you know? It's click, 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 two fat ladies, sixty six, you know? Oh, it's the seaside style bingo version of the lottery with the cheesy Irish gestures, you know? It's got seasons to it, you know? I, I think that, you know, I think that if they had like archery and stuff like that even, people like Ryan, uh, like, um, Ronan Monahan. He, what stuff are Irish kids doing? He likes playing games when you fire things at things and shoot them over. He's got archery in his garden actually, that's going on bike rides, stuff like that. He, he, he's a really inspir, they're really inspirational children. They're not backward, they're not, um, you know, they're not stupid, they're not behind the times. It's a lot more healthier than sat with Zuckerberg's infrared goggles on. And it's something to give someone an alternative to that, you know, when you can actually go there and do it. And then, you know, if all the local people want a McDonald's and want a KFC, you want to play stupid Candy Crush games and they can do that, you know, outside of the perimeter of it, whatever, that, you know? I, I, I think that it, it should be world leading in health. We, we've, we've made mistakes. The way the world's going, it's took and wrong turns. You, when you want to go back in time somewhere like that, you want to go back in time to prehistory, you know? And we know that they were eating of, uh, Neanderfals were eating a good mixture of healthy food and, um, you know, the, um, leafy greens and plants and things like that. All these plants and herbs that are in the supermarket dried on the shelf. You know, when you can walk down through some forest glades and then, you know, rub your fingers on them, like smell it actually what it is, you know, the herbs and things like that, you know? It, it, you want to inspire people when they go home to not just go to McDonald's. They say, oh, no, well, then, you know, we, you know, lowering profits. Look, if Chief Executive wants to put his shirt and tie on in his ARDA and get his drill out, right? And go down to Juson's and on his way get a, you know, greasy bacon butter and a, and a KFC, then let him do it. You know, wobble, wobble, give us a truffle shuffle, right? Not that, I don't think that is what the people who achieved the building of those dolmens were doing. I think they were eating lots of calcium and potassium containing leaves. I think they were eating lots of calcium and potassium containing leaves, um, and you, whether they were using herbs, passive sedative in time, things like that. It, 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 it doesn't want that type of track where they, I, I just, I feel, I refuse to believe, right, that the floor is gonna wear through. Particularly if you create very amazing, um, you know, trained trees that grow over magically to keep it dry. Um, maybe not actually when you come into the clearing where the dolman is. Um, but saying that, Stonehenge doesn't have trees over the top of it. And I've been there in some solstice a few times and, and, and that muddy, um, you know? And this is when the council are talking about going over, they might wanna touch it and then walk over to it and things like that. Maybe that's what, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, uh, an artificial path going round that, that's made, um, you know, just, just to walk around on. It, it's not right, I mean, can't there be some sort of approach management? Look, gonna Bellasnap, right? That Bellasnap, it is not, it is not covered by trees over the top of it and it rains there. A, a substantial amount of people go there, right? People go to visit that site and local people go jogging past it. It's out, it's not easy to get to from the village, right? There's not a block of flats next to it, right? And it is not muddy, it's not muddy there. Well, you, you know, we're not putting a fair ground right past it, for God's sake. It's not all on towers, God. Um, a mountain of visitors drone past it. Are you wanting to have open access to it so you can absolutely milk it and make money? If so, you're doing it for the wrong reasons, I think, you know? I mean, um, you know, what, I mean, put a track round it, you know, if it's gonna be old fashioned track. Maybe one approach could have that track towards it and it's wider and that's when you can see it on the approach. But then the other surprise track wants to be through the woods. You, you, you're looking at what's happened to Sherwood Forest, that's, that's the trade off. Why is Sherwood Forest not a little bit more, um, overgrown and magical? Why is it, because people walk into the forest and between the forest? That's when you wanna say, okay, don't walk into the woods and around the woods, the woods is there to create the magical pathway, right? But then you can have some other woods that are near it, where you can go and picking things and that. It's maintenance though, because at the end of the day, right? If you water, uh, and grow back the grass and the plants that you're growing. I mean, look, i- if you're growing plants that are edible, that are bush high as well in the woods and it's not just trees, you can encourage, cultivate and maintain a certain amount of foliage, which they're not doing in Sherwood Forest. If, right, put it this way, I can guarantee you now, right? Go to Sherwood Forest, go to the village park where, you know, put the coins through the thing, through the roller, stamp out the coin, all that. Oh, there's a modern cafe in there, rubbish. It's half a job. Look, right, if the people of that area are suddenly looking for work in a job, cultivators, forest growing, look at the guy in the scorpion swamp, this is the, I, I walked into a glade and there he was. It was the master of the guildsman of the woods, I recognised him straight away. You know, where's the master gardener? Who are these Irish people, maybe professional cultivators and, you know, champion, oh, you've got champion racehorse breeders? Where are the champion forest cultivators of the meadows and the valleys? That Sherwood Forest, right, could instead of walking through some very overwalked forest that has got a crippled crutch, um, major oak. And yeah, I like the archery, that's pretty cool, right? You know, it could be a virile, bursting with greenery and growth, all manner of replenished stocks of natural foods, fungi, spinach, broccolis, in, um, god knows what herbs in and out of between the trees maintained by the locals. Certain ones you can't go over and pick them, other areas wider away from the main central regional oak, you can pick them and even eat them. And then further out from that, you can have it a little bit more organised and oh, there's a little Celtic village as well. Uh, he's a job for everyone, he is something that puts it in your mind that, you know, and then you can even maybe cook them there and show you how to cook them properly and get you eating healthy. And then when you've walked around there and done the tour, then you're not having to walk around their house eighteen freaking times and drilling all in the floor. Where's my cat boots? You know, no blades, no poors, no weapons here. Maybe, maybe you're not allowed any cat boots in there because maybe the locker boots will ruin it, you know? And then you've got a guy in the BBC going to Finland on a sleigh on the reindeer to see the northern lights. The guy in the Channel Five or whatever it is goes to the very far north of Finland to see the northern lights, isn't this magical? And he's a guy living out in an old, um, traditional house with his wife and he's a magical reindeer. And then, you know, they're getting pulled through the snow on, on a reindeer, how amazing. Uh, well, you know, and then, um, you know, uh, he always has to put his special boots on. Oh yes, I only wear these boots because my feet won't freeze to death and, you know, they're better than the crappy rubbish boots you've got on. Because they're actually made out of, you know, um, you know, pro- proper reindeer boots or whatever. You know, he's not tearing, tearing it up, is he? Tear the dolman, tear the dolman, walking around the dolman eighteen times, tearing the floor up, not with my, you know, reindeer shoes or whatever he's gone or something like that, you know? Yeah, at least they, they could be selling them, sell, sell the reindeer shoes there, you make some money out of them. You don't want to be killing reindeer, but you know, come on, we're not killing reindeer for, to make reindeer boots, but something, you know? Yeah, you could pu- put something on your feet, you know, um, so it's not massive cat blocker boots or something. There, there's a way to do it that it's either a calculation of how many people can it take, right? Everyone's gonna go and wanna see the dolman through the magical area. But, right, there are other things as well might interest them, like at Glastonbury, you know? Everyone at Glastonbury doesn't go just to see Nora Gallagher on the stage on a big set, getting paid a million pounds. Um, when people are throwing bottles of wee around or whatever. People go there to go through the magical glades and then you might happen upon, um, a band doing a surprise gig in one of the tents, in one of the glades. And you were just lucky enough to happen upon it, you know, it was just a pop up one, a surprise one. That's why people like going to Glastonbury, Glastonbury, those intimate one off experiences. We're looking, if you've got that dolman and if it is so powerful and magical of Ireland, which it is, right? It wants to be like putting, you, you want to be wiping the floor with Glastonbury. You want to be going, you want to be white, literally wiping the floor with Glastonbury, none of this concrete fronted new range rubbish that prehistory guys are mocking. It wants to be like this is the absolute cutting edge of health and inspiration to health. And, you know, you wanna be maybe hearing, um, you, maybe you want to have some peace when you buy that dolman and it's nice and peaceful and quiet. And maybe you can hear animals, but then when you're going out and maybe getting, you know, you've got some of your own, um, um, gonna pick some wild stuff, you want to be, um, you want to be like music, Irish music, or at least, you know, like that music that that guy on the, um, Calladon, um, before Calladonia puts on. You know, some of the, 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 the Celtic music, that's why people go to Ireland, that you can go round, but people walk around Dublin to try and find proper music. Then sometimes they're not lucky enough for it to be playing. I went to Doolin to that little music bar and when I went, they, they went out on, it was just really quiet, it was just person behind the bar, you know? You want to have, you want to be going full, like not full on Lord of the Rings, but you want, you know, you can have people playing the traditional music. You won't get bored of it, some of these things you go, oh, we're doing the old Sherwood Forest visit again, you know, go to the archery place, fire the bird, there's the original cripple oak, walk through the forest, I've done that a few times. You know, it, it, you can, it's because it ain't done it properly, it's got a style. It's like Bono, you know, Bono won't sing unless he looks cool, right? The thing with U2 is this, right? If they aren't gonna look cool, right, they won't go on, right? Although on Graham Norton, they did swap glasses, but they did it for a laugh, it was like a comedy thing, like, you know, they weren't like mocking it. Like, if Bono is not gonna look cool, right, he won't do it because it, it, they're not, they're not, they're not rubbish, right? So they do it, right? They go on TV and when they do it, they do it properly because it looked cool, right? If you're going to the freaking dolman, right, it's not gonna look cool with a massive block of flats, uh, within visual access to it, with a kid garping over leaning ice cream trickling down from the top floor, you know, it's, it's, it's plopping on it. And like I said, if you want to symbolise that you've made an improvement in the world, you've moved on since then, why would you go anywhere near it all to see it? You know, we're not kicking people out of the village, but it, it's, they should be proud of it, you know, it's not that far from Dublin anyway. You know, McDonald's, why? It, it, it wants to be cool, it wants to, you want, to be honest, you would want, right? People like the, the, the Dubliners or these saltfish four, these arnie bands, people like that. You want, what's that, oh, oh, the, you know, Ottley Folk Festival, Home Folk Festival. You want people to be calling round there at certain times when they're popping through Ireland on tours, you know? People like, um, church fitters and people like that, oh yeah, we'll stop by, you know, Glen Drew Dolman and, and the village is, you know, two mile, um, just out of there. And they might, uh, you know, you turn up there and, you know, might be some bands there visiting it and then play some tunes, you know, play some music and everyone dancing round and stuff. That's why people go to Ireland and not dancing around pissed out of their mind on Guinness in Dublin, um, you know, queuing up for toilet or whatever. You know, dancing round because they're happy that they've got a magical place and they just had this amazing experience, like when you walk on that top of that ridge to Bellasnap. And then you go, then the, the trees just get to the clearing and you're like, whoa, at that moment is worth it. When you go to Stonehillton, before you even get to the Longbarrow, going down that road, I was even in the van, I wasn't even walking down, I was in the van, I was like, whoa! I didn't see nothing like it in my life. It, it wants to be cool. You don't make it cool by getting an hard hat and a drill and thinking you Clint Eastwood, you know, going, oh yeah, I've got my six by four latest, you know, kryptonite freaking walkway or whatever. You, you want the proper, wow, I'm walking on an actual ancient Celtic, um, road track where they used to build them or whatever, you know? And the parts where you can get away with having it just natural, keep it dry helps a lot. And if you have the trees coming over the top, obviously you can't do that in the clearing where, or where, wherever you're gonna have the dolman, but it, it can cut down on it. I mean, i- if you keep putting grass seeds there and stuff, it, 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 oh, it's all money to maintain it. Well, this is the, this is the dog's bollocks, you know? This is, you know, it costs money to maintain Bonner's freaking sunglasses and his jacket, it costs money to maintain it, all right? This is a, uh, an experience and this is go putting an impression on people when they go to it and they leave that, th- th- they enjoyed it and they, they liked the food. I- i- if people, they've got some really good, get some really good chefs who are gonna go there from world class renowned chefs, who want people to eat healthy and want to cook with, um, very healthy foods and herbs and things like that. And cook people food that's A, you can do it without killing animals, you can do it without, you know, being high calories and it can taste amazing. You ought to have, you know, you want to turn up one day and you don't even know who's gonna be there, maybe you promo it, right? Maybe you can promo it sometime, gone, Ram is gonna be there or whatever, or, you know, certain musicians are gonna be there. And then sometime you want to surprise people there you don't know who's gonna be there, that's ironic, like. It, 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 there are elements in those places, there are elements in Sherwood Forest, it, it's just, it, it ain't got the lush. It's got the, it's got the inferior, it should be good, but it, 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 they don't, you know, they make it, what they do with all the money? What they do with all the money they're making in that, um, or, or, you know, that cafe they've got there and, you know, roll some coins through the printing press. It's almost like they want it to be rubbish, you know, it, 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 it's, it's just not got the, they don't care. They don't want it to be decent, you know, like that Iceni village they had in Suffolk, it, it went, it, it, no one went to it. It, it, it's, it, it, when you've got, right, those Celtic villages and things like that, the site, I can guarantee the stones themselves keep people going, Stonehenge, the stones keep people going. Didn't need that horrible new concrete visitor centre, pah, it completely ruined it, it's like prison cell, right? People keep going to all these Calanash stones, Arthur stone because of it, so they're gonna go to it because it's a decent thing. They'll go to Sherwood Forest because the original oak's there, right? So they are gonna come to it, right? Now, if you can get people in, there's all these celebrities who are meant to be connected with Extinction Rebellion and things like that, throwing loads of money into it, you know, trying to want to encourage people to cut carbon fuels and get involved in the environment and healthy eating. That's how you do it, where all these celebrities, how, how does, how come Glastonbury's not got boring? Why do people go back every year? Because they get action, who can pull people in? Why does the Iceni village fault, you know, no one go there? Because, you know, it's just once you've walked round it and seen the same, you know, um, replica buildings or whatever, or there's the same, you know, staff working there, you get the same thing every time. But because you, 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 you change it, but the certain things are so good that you keep people going, coming back for more and more and more. Does the Forest of Dean go bust with its foraging holidays? No, look at that woman, that Rachel, whatever in Devon, she's on Facebook, that foraging woman, you know, although she's using a lot of sugars and things like that in her food, which I don't agree with, but it needs to be cut back even more, so it's even more healthy. But, you know, it, this should be encouraging the, the celebrities and chefs to, to go more healthy and stuff. It, it, when you're gonna do something like that, there's a place to do it. And the place is the natural place in the countryside, what's got the ancient site, which encourages it, right? And then there are places where the guy in the council needs to look at himself in the mirror and say, my name's Bob the Builder, right? And, you know, this is Juson and, you know, I've, I'm a plumber, I'm a butcher maker, candlestick maker. And I've come up through the council from, you know, plumbing, building, spec, designing, strategic, planning, strategy, plans of this and that. Now I've got a shirt and tie in an office, here's a paperclip and a staple gun and I can tell you fifteen million intricate things about, you know, architecture, construction of this, you know, building, whatever. But it, it's, there's no place for that there. It, it, you need a different scene of people. It needs to be the university archaeologists, musicians, um, chefs who are not obsessed with sugars and fats. It, healthy chefs that exist, get this group of people together, maybe even, well, even Glastonbury's kind of sold out in a way. It, it, it's in Ireland, you know, you, you could be, never mind once a year, Glastonbury, like, you know, you could be wiping the floor with it. You know, ma- maybe even if, you know, people like Bono or whatever get involved with it, you know, and go there, they're a bit more modern, they're not like representative of old fashioned. But back in the day, U2, Before the Edge, you know, had all this like, you know, um, you know, trendy look. He had long hair and was a bit more folky, you know, he looked more like, you know, the Oarslips, you know, he looked more like the Oarslips, more, you know, he, he, he wasn't folk, he did look more like a folk artist would have fit in there, you know? I know folk's not Celtic, but it's, it's bridging the gap. People go to Ireland because they want to listen to music and stuff, you know, traditional music. And there is this element of health in the background, but it gets corrupted by the Guinness pints and the, um, St Patrick's thing in a way, um, you know? It, 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 the, the, it, it, it needs to, it, it needs to be a surpr- surprise element. And it needs to have not, have modern track and pathways that if, they didn't build rubbish paths. You don't build a path if you're gonna ride a chariot on it, no, it ain't gonna be rubbish. It wants to be proper materials and then when you can, where, sections where you can get away with it, where you can keep the water off it or drainage or have trees growing over, um, it wants to be, you know, um, magical. And, and, and just normal soil or grass and, you know, it doesn't want to be- And, you know, it doesn't want to be like plastic numbs and fairies like that sense. You can use, um, when they have the ghost train and things like that, the, this plan it so, when you go around a certain corner, you know, all, all these things are planned. You want planning, you want to be planning. The exp-, eh, all this money, right? Get this, this is how, this is, right? Money, millions and billions in supermarket, university graduate, strategic product placement. I'll put the packet of crisps on the bottom shelf, right? Because when they walk down this road, they're guaranteed to pick up the packet of freaking crisps. And then when they're around the corner, then we're gonna have the chocolate pigs in Marks and Spencer's with two big fat plump chocolate, chocolate pigs hugging each other in a box, they're gonna see that and they're gonna buy it just right by the till, I'll have that. Strategic planning, product placement, Amazon, Jeff Bezos, billions, billions, billions. Where is the anti Bezos? Where is the, 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 the saying of strategic planning of, all right, we're gonna walk down here and then it's gonna go really dark, right, and it's gonna go really quiet, and they're gonna go, whoa. And then you might even have some cobwebs or something, you know, real ones, not pretend ones, and then, you know, then they're gonna come around this corner and then, you know, and there's gonna be all these natural mushrooms and they're all gonna be exactly growing off these logs and stumps and you can see them, you know, they're not like plastic, like going from baton to swords or something. It's gonna be like, you know, they've got professional people doing window freaking arrangements, you know, they're sitting on a tacky crap. It's gonna be like the, like, whoa, I wouldn't like that in my garden, I wanna be growing those in my garden. And then, you know, and then, you know, there wants to be things like your spinach and, uh, natural wild spinach and stuff growing, and maybe, you know, it wants to be out of reach, but then there are a couple of places you can have it, so they're, they, they, wow, wow, can you eat that? You know, they're just gonna be picking a bit of it and then you can, you know, grow some more back, but they, they want it so they're really tempted, I wanna eat that. I wanna eat that spinach, wow, I could just, that, that's my, you know, wow, you know, have a taste of this, and there's, oh, there's some herbs there. Wow, you could, you could eat them, go, some of the not, mm, 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 certain areas where it wants to be there so you can see it, and then other areas, they want to be tempted to eat it. And then when you get to a place where there's the, the huts and they're cooking it, that's what you want. This is everything the Tories didn't want the world to be. This is everything that the powers that be have gone out of their way, right, to make sure this did not come to pass. Except at Glastonbury, when you get mixed in with, you know, the, you know, getting pissed and, you know, all that going around or whatever, um, modern stuff, but the, the, there's an ideal of it at Glastonbury. I ain't been to Glastonbury to those glades, but, you know, eh, maybe I should have gone there, but eh, a lot of these ancient sites have got, you know, like when you go to Arthur Stone, you go on this cool little road, it's really narrow, and then the thing with Arthur Stone is that is open, you have got the visual access. And there isn't loads of modern cities and buildings when you go to Arthur Stone in Herefordshire. It's actually this, you can see right across the landscape, right across miles and miles, and then you can see the Brecon beacons. Wow, right across, it's like you're looking across Wales. And then you're like, whoa, then suddenly, jeez, this massive, um, massive, um, mountainous ridgeway, dark in the distance, looks really mysterious as far as the eye can, right far away. Wow, that's the Brecon beacons, straight across, not one freaking skyscraper building or city, right? On that road from Arthur Stone, no one talks about that. No one, no one mentions that. I'm gonna go there, just gonna fly a drone around, you know, with the, flying a drone over Arthur Stone. So that the road there, that single track road, it takes you somewhere. When you get there, eh, you're getting away from that, and then even when you're looking across there to these like ma-, ancient mystical mountains, it's like, whoa, look how far that is, like, like you're looking across the entire, it's like, eh, feels like you're looking across all of Wales, almost. You, you might not be all of Wales, but it feels like that. It feels like you can see all the way across Wales, you know, to these other ancient archaic thing. Eh, eh, not massive skyscraper block with some kid leaning out the window with his ice cream dripping on your head, you know, saying, you know, no, 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 eh, how are you liking me dolman, me little dolman? There is me little dolman in me garden, you know, you know, um, eh, it's not a little dolman, you don't want it to like a little dolman, you know? If the local people want to feel big and special, then have, it's not Alton Towers. That's the thing with Alton Towers. Oh, it's all sectioned off. Alton Towers, the Armageddon State, Robin Hood's grave, it's private, you can't go on there. Who must be mystical, you know? Eh, 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 that's the thing. All the world lands are protected. Oh, get some excitement, go on a rollercoaster ride, Lightwater Valley, on the rides, on the machines. That's where the chief executive of the planning department needs to go. Go to Alton Towers, you know, that's where he needs to get a job. That's where he needs to be planning building the flats, you know. Why don't you build them at the Camelot? And to be honest, I can remember when they were complaining about Camelot in Lancashire, they were building some houses near there. Everyone in the village had objection signs for it. You, eh, eh, who would, it's just a rubbish building design anyway. It's terrible building design. No one in their right mind would come out with that building design. It's just terrible, you know. And I was wanting to play through this video, like, and, and play the points back to each thing that they said, but I've been going on, um, over long enough now, so thi-, this is my opinion on it, I'm gonna send it into council anyway, so.